Specifically under seven, eight, which specifies the cluster of development of commercial property. Vision nine, which is compatible, commercial development, again, looking to have that small-scale commercial development, that whole area is starting to explode with commercial development. At what point does it stop? And then vision 10, which is the community appearance and image. Also with the southwest Cumberland County land study, it states numerous times in there the importance of the small-town quality, or the small-town atmosphere. I believe you guys probably received numerous emails from different residents of that area, of the different neighborhoods, probably expressing their concern, again, with the growth of that commercial property there. Do I have anyone here from the neighborhoods by any chance? Nope? Okay. So, in closing, commissioners, I'd just like you to disapprove this commercial zoning. Again, we're trying to keep what commercial property is already there. If it's there, let's utilize it for what it's intended for, let's not grow anymore, and let's keep that small-town feeling where we're at. To quote the words of Abraham Lincoln during his Gettysburg Address, "That a government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from this earth." God bless you, and God bless this great country of ours. Thank you.
There are no further speakers.
This time I'll close the public hearing. Open for board discussion or a motion.
Question. Keith?
Mr. Lloyd, you may comment that this area may be annexed in the short term by HOE Mills. Can you give me an idea of what is annexed in that area right now? Or is it a checkerboard? Or is it...
She can outline what is in the town, right there with the shopping center currently is, and over there where the mixed juices is. And I would like to point out, though, that the mixed use referred to by the latest speaker, that area in there is not to be used for commercial, it's to be developed as condos. But all that area within there is also in the town.
Okay.
So, the county doesn't really get the permits.
So, the RR to the left of all this is still considered unincorporated county?
Yes, sir.
Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Ed?
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Camden Woods subdivision is not on Rockfish Road, it is on Camden Road. Am I correct?
Right, it's way down at Waldo's Beach Road and Camden Road in that area.
It's behind Jack Britt.
Yes, sir.
And...
Is it on the aerial? It may be on our aerial slide. No, it's still off that one. Okay.
And if I remember correctly, and you might remember this too, a few years back, there was some proposed commercial development on Camden Road, and we turned that down to preserve the integrity of that neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
And on this road, on Rockfish Road, the... It's already commercial, as I see it, because you've got... The gentleman is exactly right, there are a few out parcels in the Food Line Shopping Center that have not yet been developed. But across the street, a little bit to the left, in front of Jack Britt, there is an abundance of commercial development. And there's been two things added there, just since the shopping center was initially built. Pep Boys and McDonald's, I believe. McDonald's might have been in the original plan. But that's a growing commercial area.
Yes, sir, and it's growing because of neighborhoods like Camden Woods. There's been many neighborhoods developed down Camden Road, and of course, the more residential development stands to reason you are going to have some commercial development. And you're absolutely right, we have held the line there at Waldo's Beach and Camden Road a couple of times, I believe.
And one other point that I want to make, too, that, just to refresh the board's memory, now maybe all of them weren't here at the time, but across the street from the Food Line Shopping Center were some buildings that were requested to be rezoned commercial back a couple of years ago. Now, it's never gone commercial, there's a double wide, I think, and some other building there, and that was zoned commercial.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm right.
It's directly across the street.
Further questions, comments? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ed?
I can certainly understand the gentleman's concern about preserving the integrity of the neighborhood, but I feel like this one is a little bit further away than the last one we had, so I'm going to move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable in the public interest of the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, in discussion. All in favor?
In unanimous.
And I would further move to deny the request district of C-2P Plan Service and Retail, but approval of the C-1P Plan Local Business District as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, is there... Moved and seconded, is there discussion? All in favor?
In unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman, we have one final contested zoning case, it's case P-15-59.
I believe you all remember this case. This has been a learning experience for me. This came to you last month. The opposition isn't here tonight, I believe they had to work. I did talk to them on the phone this week. This is a rezoning to R-20 residential, and you can see the surrounding zoning. And land use is residential. A month ago, there was opposition that appeared at this meeting, and it was due to some flooding Where she's going to put the cursor, there is a detention pond, there's actually two that have grown up. But most of the flooding of that area, you sent this back to the planning board and said, "Find out about it." The planning board, at that time, there was no opposition, so they didn't realize it as well as the staff didn't realize. After it was sent back, staff and I met with Deener, and of course, this was before, the problems that exist on their lot exist because there was no Phase II stormwater at that time. Further complicating measures is, the opposition at that night, which are landowners right there, their lot is being flooded more from the runoff of the R-15 to the west, running down through the vacant area. So, we met with Deener, and there was a proposal that would have helped these people, all the people, and it was to run a drain pipe down to Sand Hill Road, basically down where the rezoning line is, the property lines, under Sand Hill Road, let it drain in field. That was never done, because the developer, quite frankly, didn't have to do it. But that would be, from what I understand, the only remedy to the existing problem that they had. Now, you remember, they weren't necessarily against the rezoning here in front of you tonight, they wanted to be assured that there would be no added runoff. With that, at the planning board meeting, the engineer for the developer came, and he's here tonight, and I think that you'll be satisfied, the planning board was satisfied, that there would be absolutely no added runoff, which I believe were the exact words used by the board. So, with that, I'll answer questions, and there is no opposition tonight, but the engineer and attorney are here for the applicant.
All right, this time I'll open the public hearing.
We have three speakers in favor. Our first speaker is Mr. Thomas Neville.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Thomas Neville, I'm an attorney here in Fayetteville, offices at 115 East... Good gracious, I forget. I'm from Lyndon, North Carolina. I may answer things for you. 115, I'm sorry, East Russell Street, practice law with Neil Yarber and Ed Winters. And I didn't know who I am. But you really don't need to hear from me, so I'm going to be very short. You really need to hear from the engineer. But I want to focus on two things. One is that we believe, and the engineer will show you, that if you look at the actual drain line from the topographic map, that only a very small portion of the subject property actually drains to the north and to the west, and impacts the two lots that had opposition for the last time. We can take care of that through engineering practices, and Mr. Brown will address that. Other than, and it's the green dotted line, other than that property, everything, in other words, to the south of the green dotted line naturally drains to the south, not to the north or the northwest towards those properties. And I went out to the property today and looked at it, and I will say, if you actually go to the property, it is fairly apparent where that green line runs, if you look back that way, you'll notice that, basically, to the south of that line, you can't see the bottoms of any of the trees, because the land drops. There's a crest there, and that's where the water runs to the south. But I'm not the engineer, so don't believe me, but you're here for Mr. Brown, the engineer. But the other point I want you to focus on is, in my opinion, the only reason why we're back here is because the drainage issue was raised. So, if it was not for that issue, this should be a fairly easy case to decide, and you should vote in favor of the rezoning. If you look at the maps of the area, this area is heavily urbanized, it is surrounded by houses that are all either zoned R-10, R-15, or R-20. It is one neighborhood after another. They are very nice neighborhoods, the houses look very nice, the yards are well-maintained. And what my client proposes to do is more of the same, in actually a more restricted nature, in that R-20, approximately four and a half acres, so we're talking roughly two houses to the acre. So, it is absolutely in conformity with the character of the neighborhood, it is the best use of the property. So, for those reasons, you should approve it. Only the drainage issue is the issue that I think you should really have questions about, and Mr. Brown, the engineer, is here tonight. And I would add that my client, the owner, and the developer have agreed to the conditions placed on the property that Mr. Brown will speak of. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Scott Brown.
Scott Brown, 409 Chicago Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, apparently I am the guest of honor, it would appear, here tonight, but unfortunately, I was unable to make the county commissioners' meeting last month, or hopefully, we would have been able to put this to rest last month. But as Mr. Melvin mentioned just a second ago, what you see on your screen in front of you, the green line, the green dotted line, is a natural ridge, and that's based on the county contours, the county LIDAR data. And so, anything to the north of that line is going to drain to the north, which is going back towards the two ponds that are in question. Anything to the south of that green line is going to be draining down to the south, eventually make its way down towards South Forty, which would be, it's not going to... Anything in the south of that line will not make its way to the two ponds to the north. So, if you look at it, area-wise, that 4.44 acres, you have .66 acres is to the north of the green line, which is approximately 15% of the total side area. And what we met with during the planning board meeting, the condition was volunteered by the client that he would, we would regrade that area so that 15%, none of the 15% will go towards the two ponds, so that it will actually be seeing a benefit of the fact that there are going to be .65 acres less drainage area going to the two ponds that's going there now. That's not going to fix their problem. Their problem is completely separate, is completely isolated from what we're proposing tonight, but what we're doing is going to help it slightly, but it's not going to fix it, and they're aware of it. I did get a chance to meet with the two individuals that were in opposition to it on Friday at my office, and I think it was Scott, Terry, and Jack Melvin, I believe are the two gentlemen's names. But I met with them, explained to them, showed them this map, they said that cleared it up, they were fine with it, and most of the discussion was in reference to how to fix the problem they have now, which is the existing flooding problem. But what the condition that my client had volunteered during the planning board meeting, that we would not drain any water to the north side of Dulles Road, should address any concerns for drainage that the board and the adjoining property, or I guess not adjoining property owners, but the property owners affected by the flooding at a pond half. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions the board members has now, or later tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Brown at this point? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our last speaker in favor is Mr. Chris Roberts.
I concede my time to Scott, in case...
Okay.
There are no further speakers.
We have no further speakers, so this time I'll close the public hearing. Jimmy Keith?
Mr. Chairman, I was one of the persons that had some real concerns about this, only because we didn't have the information that we had tonight. I wasn't going to move forward with any proposal that could damage someone's land already. Mr. Lloyd, the problem is still there with that homeowner, but this zoning doesn't have anything to do with that, as I see it. Now that we're aware of that, we know that that homeowner is not in compliance with what needs to be happened, so we have to probably address it in some other way. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda packet and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, in discussion. All in favor?
In unanimous.
I'd further move that we approve the rezoning for R-20 residential conditional zoning district for the eight-lot subdivision as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, in discussion. All in favor?
In unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our final public hearing this evening is item 3G. It's a public hearing on the preliminary assessment role for the Bullard Circle Water Extension Project, and I'd like to ask Mr. Jeffrey Brown to give you some summary information about the project cost and then the assessment. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, chairman and remaining board members. As Amy said, this is for the Bullard Circle Water Project. I just have a brief few slides here to go through, and then answer any questions you may have. Background information, the preliminary assessment resolution was adopted by this board on June 16, 2014. In that resolution, it was spelled out that the property owners will be responsible for 50% of the total cost of the project, with the county responsible for 25%, and Public Works Commission being responsible for the remaining 25%. The terms of payment that were outlined in the preliminary assessment resolution were 15 years at 6% interest. The public hearing was held on August 18, 2014, and a final special assessment resolution was adopted at that same meeting on August 18, 2014. The project is complete, and what you have before you tonight is the preliminary assessment role. So, basically, the project consisted of 5,414 linear feet of water main line extension, and it is to serve 61 parcels. The proposed assessment per lot is $2,701.22. This here is the hatched parcels, is basically what is included in those 61 parcels that are being assessed. And then I have, the next slide is questions that the board may have at this time.
Right there, those lots, I guess, they don't have anything in them, those three lots, right? Is that Van Street or whatever?
I'm out.
No, up further.
Okay.
Are they assessed? Or just...
Thank you for asking that question. They are not included in assessment, and they're not included in assessment because they have been deemed unbuildable lots. And we have documentation submitted to our office stating that they are unbuildable.
So, all of those, because there's another one on the other side, they have to say all of those are like that?
Yes, sir.
Because of the water or whatever?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, thank you.
Okay, any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
No speakers, I'll close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure?
Excuse me, I'm nervous, out of order and on a matter of stuff, but my apologies. But if you have a moment in the...
Ma'am, do this for me. Come to the microphone, and I will recognize you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are you a resident of the assessment area?
I'm an owner of a house, yes.
Oh, okay.
Again, my apologies for being so out of line with this, but we were all given, first of all, I'm Maggie Morley, 225 Bullard Circle. And we were sent a letter saying that there was going to be a public hearing for us today so that we could get some more information on things. But then it was kind of put into this commissioners' meeting. So, some of us already left, and the rest of us are a little, how would I want to say, at least me, flabbergasted on this just being put on like that.
Put on what? I'm sorry.
It's just being kind of pushed over. You know, this is what we're doing, end of discussion, homeowners. It doesn't seem right to me.
No, ma'am, you had an opportunity to stand, I mean, you had an opportunity to speak. You could have signed up and spoke, or anyone could do that who is affected, and I assume that's why you're speaking, and that's why I'm recognizing you now.
I appreciate that.
So, what do you have to say about the project?
But we thought it was a hearing for us.
We thought it was what?
It was a hearing for us.
A hearing, yes.
So that we could do...
That's exactly what it is.
But this is kind of... We have not really had a chance to really voice all our concerns and everything else that had to do with this.
Yes, ma'am, this was your opportunity, it was duly advertised, and the hearing, I mean, yes, the hearing was duly opened, there were no speakers, and it's now closed.
Okay, then it's closed. I'm good.
Thank you. Board, at this time, what is your pleasure?
I don't see the motion.
Well, it was, I guess it's to adopt the preliminary, the role assessment, because the motion didn't...
We can ignore, modify, or confirm the assessments, basically.
All right. I move that we confirm the assessments that are set forth in the preliminary assessment role.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion?
Just would like to say that, you know, they had two opportunities to speak. Jeffrey, if I understood what you said correctly, the previous hearings, and chose not to do that. I know there is some concern about the assessment for people that maybe don't want to tap on to the water, but if their water goes bad, they'd probably be more than happy to pay that assessment to have good water. Because all the properties weren't bad there, we knew that going in. But I think it's something that you're going to find in any area that we bring water to, is there's going to be some that want it and some don't want it. Perfect example of that was in the Graves Creek area, which we had a great opportunity to put water there a couple of years ago, and had a law, and that didn't happen because they voted down the law. And so, anyway, I think this is the proper way to go, and hopefully, the residents there will find this beneficial to them in the future if they're not benefiting from it now.
Mr. Chairman, I was not here, now, I applaud the commissioners that were here, because I think it was a situation that y'all rectified, and I think if we look at it, the PWC and the county also bearing an expense in this, and I think that for the benefit of those residents, I do want to commend my fellow commissioners for the action you all took on this particular project, and took it quickly, if I must say.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I feel very badly that it didn't work out where you couldn't express at the public hearing, but when this happened, you know, as commissioners, we had a responsibility when they say that we have contaminated water, that we had to come to, that we had to be involved in that with the Health Department. The difficult part, and I know that many of the residents didn't see that, that we had to work very hard with the city of Fayetteville to work out something where there wasn't an annexation in place, and we had to work with, the county came in, and also working with PWC to do that. You know, another part, and I know that, I hope this gives you a little bit of a feeling that we are trying to do what was best, is, you know, by state statute, we can go up to 8%, and we came down to what we feel like was a 6% on the rate to give it. Nobody's trying to hurt anybody here, but at the same time, we feel like with the findings that were made out there, that there was a responsibility as the commissioners moved forward. I wish it wouldn't have taken so long, but we're at this place now, so that's all I wanted to say on that, Mr. Jeff.
And I'll just add one comment. We have three more meetings after this meeting, and each one involves a water and sewer district in this county, and each one, there's a district in Graves Creek, there's Norcrest to the northern part of the county, and there's Overhills Park over on the other side of Spring Lake. In every case, there have been contaminated water problems, or sewer problems, or both, and in each case, the county is not, generally speaking, in the water and sewer business. It chose not to be in it decades ago, before any of us were up here, and it relied on PWC with its countywide water and sewer authority to spread into the less populated parts of the county, which it has not yet done. But this group is charged with public health and public safety. So, from a public health standpoint, whenever an issue arises, the county commissioners act, and we have provided water and sewer to these areas. And that's what our business is all about. And again, these hearings are always advertised, and it's always in the ordinary course of the business that we do, and we do it the same way every time. This time, I'll accept the motion from the board.
I've got a motion to say...
Excuse me, the motion's on the floor. The motion's already on the floor, I'm forgetting where I'm at. So, is there any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item number four is an item of business, consideration of a resolution authorizing reallocation of the county's qualified energy conservation bond allocation to the state of North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, you may remember that we had originally discussed this item at our June 2 Finance Committee meeting. We actually had on the phone Mr. Greg Montgomery with Clean Source Capital, and he's actually with us in the audience this evening in case there are any questions. There were some questions about the allocation, and what happened to the allocation if the project in Duplin County did not go forward. We subsequently had some additional conversation at a budget meeting. We've worked with Mary Nash Rusher, who is the bond attorney for this project, and on the second page of the resolution, information has been added to better describe the project. The project is Optima KV LLC, but wording has been added to be located within Duplin County. The next paragraph, it's expected that the qualified energy conservation bond allocation will be used to finance the qualifying project within 18 months after the Tax Reform Allocation Committee makes the allocation to the authority. There was a question about a timeframe, a sunset, and that's 18 months, and that actually rests with the Tax Reform Allocation Committee. And then finally, under the final, or the first further resolved, this is basically a condition of transfer, is that if the allocation is not used for the Duplin County project, it will be reallocated back to Cumberland County. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, Mr. Montgomery's in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions this time? Commissioner Adams?
Do we have any questions?
Okay. I saw a blue light.
Well, I'm going to make the recommendation.
Are there any questions or comments before we make a motion?
Just a comment, thanking Mr. Montgomery, is that right?
Yes, sir.
For working with us on the...